All right, at six o'clock, we're gonna call this meeting to order. All board members are accounted for. I'd like to ask you to please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff, do you have any additions to the agenda?
Nope.
If no one else has any additions to the agenda, I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Make motion.
Jolynn on the motion?
I'll second.
Rondi on the second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Scheduled presenters. This was supposed to be for Amanda Thompson for the school forest presentation, but Jeff is gonna take this over.
So my first year here, actually it was the very first month, we had a family that was interested in doing some legacy work for their son that had passed away out in, was it Utah? I believe he was a park ranger. And doing some climbs out in Utah and passed away after during that time. But they wanted to leave a legacy, a remembrance of their son. And so they decided to start pouring their heart and soul into the school forest here. And they have been doing a fantastic job with, in collaboration with the school district employees like Amanda and Dwayne Pliscott, and our facilities department in revitalizing the forest and rejuvenating the trails and adding more items into the school forest. And we are actually a Minnesota DNR-recognized school forest for the state. And as you can tell by some of these pictures coming up, there's a lot of activities that take place down in the forest, both in the elementary side and on the high school side. So lots of learning going on in the program. And so if you look at the aerial view with the forest there between the two buildings, it goes from the street right out here all the way down, getting close to the dumps. You guys obviously know where that is at. And so previously it was designated in the 1980s or the 90s, I'm not really sure, as an environmental learning area. And in 2009, there's a restructuring of the area with school improvements. So I think there's probably trails that were created or cut into that area.
Yeah, I think when the construction was done in this part of the building, they changed some of the things out there.
Okay. And if I get over my skis a little bit too much, just stop me and stay a little bit more. And then 2020, we became part of the Minnesota State School Forest Program with generous support from Tim and Julie McGeeos, who helped us get that kickstarted and rejuvenated as well as I mentioned before. And from 2020 to 2025, there was a lot of habitat improvement and other amenities that were added as far as a deck and overlook area and reseeding of the natural grasslands out there and some added trees as well. Some of the habitat improvements, there was a lot of buff thorn removal, prairie restoration, and tree and perennial planting, as I mentioned before. But you start to see some of the areas come back to life again from within the school forest. And these are great learning opportunities for all of our kids of all ages. There's a gravel entry path that was added, observation deck. There's three group seating areas and eagle scalp projects that created some benches along some of the trails. There's signage that's been added and then wood chip trails. We take a lot of the trees that have fallen and chip them up and then add them back into the trail system with a lot of help from not only the volunteers that have helped, but also our facilities and maintenance people as well. Lot of donated money has gone into here from area businesses and we're happy to see that over the years. So we're really proud of those donations. Some of the big resources that we got right away were from this couple that makes field desks, as they're called, where kids, each kid gets a desk to take outside with them and they can have different pieces of whatever they're learning that day within the field desk and they have something to write on. The school forest program has provided a lot of freebies to us by being a part of that program. And they also provide a lot of training for staff on an ongoing basis. And so we've had some staff take part in that. And then we've had like full-on staff training earlier this fall.
November.
November. Where we had staff down into the forest there. So here's some different activities that kids have taken part in between elementary FIAID, sixth grade STEM, survivor, survival, shelter, design and construction. There's a third grade plant scavenger hunt, ecology investigations through biology, breeding groups from kindergarten and our natural resources class doing chainsaw skills out in the woods, which is awesome. So here is a list of donors, the sign is actually just right out here. And Gemini from in town donated the sign. And then we can add placards to the sign as we continue to get our partners list going here. And this is a very extensive partners list, obviously, that's been created. So if you get a chance to take time to take a look at that, it's just awesome. I think that's it.
Such a cool thing that our school has that we can offer the kids.
I think that look-along thing is kinda cool.
Yeah.
Very appreciative that our school has it.
And we probably meet, we used to meet a lot more often when this was first getting going again, but we probably meet what, twice a year now? About twice. Once in the fall, once in the spring. Just to kinda keep up the, especially the prairie restoration and the controlled burns that we do every once in a while. Tim and Julie have been great partners and organizing volunteers and they have just been great. I can't say enough about them and the people that they've gotten to work with us and give donations for us as well. So very happy, great learning area for our kids.
And the staff get educated.
Staff get educated.
Different ideas on how to use it.
There's lots of free curriculum provided from the DNR.
Awesome.
Everybody has access to because we're an official school forest.
How many other schools do you think have something like this?
I can't remember what the number is. It's, there's actually quite a few. And they range from quite a bit bigger than ours to there are some urban school forests that are literally like. Yeah.
Like that gets counted?
Yeah, I mean, I can't remember what exactly the process is to become one, but there are quite a few schools that have them. So I'd say maybe 150, 180, something like that.
About half of the schools in the state.
Yeah.
All right. Thank Amanda for putting that presentation together.
Yeah. All right, I don't see anyone here for public input, so we won't do that. Move on to consider. Nice pose.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Josh, this will be your turn to talk now.
I'll do it.
Consideration to approve the finance report. Josh?
Nothing too outstanding here. You'll see plenty more numbers in the next couple of meetings as we enable, present the preliminary budget for fiscal '26 and then in June, the final revision of the budget for fiscal '25. And the '26 budget will have other reductions that are made and some considerations as we go through the process of tonight's meeting as well as a couple of admin meetings and maybe a financing prior to that happening. So you'll get a lot more information on numbers in the next couple of months. Casual here, there's not a lot of outstanding things to mention. It's a normal activity throughout the time through the district. One thing to note, we're in the middle there of that bus lease. We're finally tentatively gonna be in a bus soon. That's not real accurate, but something that should have come, you know, before school started. Finally in the prep to get there and going to the paper to have the leasing work done. So when the bus does arrive, we can make that transition pretty smooth. Most likely not gonna have it for very much of this fiscal year, but at least we'll have it in our fleet. Further on that line, the 2015 A debt service payment. Most of our debt is set to pay in the end of January, early February as a principal payment and interest. And then we have a interest-only payment in August. This is one of the few that are set up where it's a little bit off schedule. We do that in order, when the finances came through the time of the project, to try to keep the debt level balanced. We do have, it's pretty much structured so that in 2032, essentially there's a large window opening for the district to look at maybe where the priorities are in terms of either facilities or things that can happen to the district without having to have a huge impact to taxpayer. But in order to get to that point, we're pretty frugal and conservative of the things that we do with our funds, including one of the projects we're doing this summer, the roof project. There's true real big sections of roof that need some attention. One that is more dire need than the other. And that's why we're taking care of this summer. The rest we feel we can get through for a while. But again, trying to minimize the impact to taxpayer and maximize the structure and integrity of the district of the building and making sure there's not heavy watering in classrooms and further eroding parts of the building. So there'll be some work being done in the district over the summer. It's important to note, especially taxpayers are all concerned about where our dollars go. Dollars for that are not dollars that can be spent in the classroom. Those are facility dollars and that we can use for salaries and those sorts of day-to-day operations. And it's important that we keep good care and our good steward of the facilities as well because while we need to have the students in, we're sure they're safe and they take care of well too. So it's a scheduled project that will happen and the bids will be opened up on May 1st for that. And hopefully they come well within the project boundaries that we have for it so that we can move smoothly into the summer and follow that project down. Again, not go, two big things out of the ordinary there. If you have any questions, I can certainly do whatever it came to answer.
Any questions for Josh?
Just one question on the Inverergy. I know we had talked at one point that's gonna come in a different form. When does that?
Yeah, so we have about two years of payments after this one. The deal was structured when Inverergy came in to forego paying the normal property tax. And the city's got portion and the district has a portion. All three entities, the city, the county and the school had to agree for them to come in. And we've got a portion that comes directly to us and then another portion that comes into CSW. There's two payments listed there. It will come in a different form. They will be on the regular tax roll when it comes in. I would have to do some talking with the county to see exactly what the difference potentially could be to that. I don't know if it's gonna be a significantly different amount. It could be drastically less, it could be more. I'm not sure we're bad without talking to the county to see where that would follow. It could be, and I don't think it will be, but it could be something where they get to the end of their kind of tax-free part and they were to change how they operate to. We don't know what would be in store for there, but how it should work is the payments would end and they go on the regular tax roll.
Thanks. If there's no other questions, I'd look for a motion to approve the finance report. Make a motion. Pete on the motion?
I'll second.
Jody on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Jeff, would you like to read the resolution of acceptance of gifts?
Yes, here are the donors for this month. We have $2,791.18 from Northland Safety Solutions for a softball pitching machine, $949.99 from the Ed Foundation for a camera lens kit for Mr. Fogarty for the lantern, $470 from the Ed Foundation for the James J. Hill House and Capitol Tour for Ms. Lushke, $284.05 from the Ed Foundation for a charging rack for the silent system headphone system for Ms. Ila, and then $3,950 from the Ed Foundation for Happy Numbers website, which is an app for Mrs. Alberts. And I believe they're gonna be using it even more throughout the elementary, not just in second grade. So we do thank our Ed Foundation and our other partners, Northland Safety Solutions, for their generous gifts.
All right, and I'll add that that silent system is pretty neat.
All the Happy Numbers website is approved for a whole school.
It is, okay.
So it's not limited on logins. Math programming, correct?
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, if no one wants anything else pulled out separately, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make motion.
Jolynn on the motion?
Second.
Luke on the second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Carries. We will move on to the soup report.
Yes. It's kind of an update, not that I can think of. Federal and state educational fiscal forecast, the state really hasn't made much headway over the past week or two since our last board meeting in the federal. We don't have a whole lot of more information as well, but we're continuing to keep eyes on it here. I did, or I was able to attend the State of the State speech by Governor Walz the other night at the state capitol. That was kinda neat. I was invited by Representative Alton Dorff to attend and that was on April 23rd. First time I've ever been a part of that, which was really interesting. Got a chance to talk to Representative Alton Dorff and other representatives prior to that speech. I did not get a chance to talk to Governor Walz, although he almost came over and shook my hand and felt he verified.
I saw that. You had a fair amount of camera time.
I did, yes. This is not a camera based.
I really thought he was reaching for your hand.
Yeah. But yeah, good experience and I'd probably go up and do it again, but that's just a high school social studies teacher nerd. So, pretty cool stuff. I also wanna make a statement that we do realize that some of the grade levels in the elementary, the class sizes are getting up there, which is a good problem to have. We are monitoring that. And so if you guys have parents reaching out to you, tell them that we are monitoring it and we'll have a recommendation probably at our main board meeting. But we do wanna see where those class sizes are going. We don't wanna jump too quickly. And we can't wait until really August to find somebody. But we are monitoring it and are aware of it. And we'll bring back a recommendation to me at the board meeting. And then just a reminder, on May 7th will be the school board member day. And this is also our walk to school day. And so if you guys are available prior to school, come in and greet kids. When they come back in walking, usually down here by the field house door 12, is a good place to hang out and see all the elementary and high school kids coming in from downtown.
Do we have apples?
Say, is there apples and waters this time?
There's waters.
I think that was it.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure if Lori got apples or was able to get apples for that, but that's usually a good time. And then do you want them to meet you in the high school office that day?
Sure.
We can do high school first?
Okay.
Sure.
Well, just tell Stephen that we're just taking him first.
That's fine. I have seniority over him.
At what time do you want to say?
Usually the walk to school would tend to be there, it'd be between 7:30 and 7:45, I would say. But if you can't make it until then, do you want them there at eight?
Yeah, I mean, that's when classes start, so.
Unless you guys have questions, that's all I got.
Yeah, on the class size, we're gonna have a couple, is that enrollment? Enrollment is up, is that what we're?
In certain grade levels, it is. And so sometimes those, you can't really determine who's all moving here or add kids to open enrollment here. And so sometimes the numbers get out of whack with the rest of them. And so we may have to add staff if that's the case. Which I said, I mean, it's a good problem to have.
And are those open enrollments, do they come in mid-year or like halfway through the year?
Some of them do, right. And so you almost have to determine, you know, are some of them staying, some of them leaving, or are we getting to a point where there's no way that many kids are gonna leave? So we're gonna have to add, you know, because we may add some over the summer.
Yeah, just the main thing is if you're getting any concerns from parents about, yeah, we have one grade that class sizes are looking like they're gonna be above 30, just say that we're well aware of that and we're looking to be addressing that, you know, so.
All right, let's move on to action items. There's no old business, new business. Consideration to approve extending the extracurricular committee recommendation to allow free admission for pre-K to 12th grade Cannonball students for all regular season bomber home games for a two-year trial. The two-year trial was approved on May 22nd of 2023.
So obviously the trials ended and do you guys wanna continue moving forward with this on a trial basis? Do you wanna permanently put it in? Or do you just not wanna continue anymore, I think is the question. And the finance committee had that on their agenda, I believe, and it was removed before it became a recommendation. So it wasn't recommended to be a part of the cuts, when the cuts were made. But you guys, I guess the question is, do you wanna extend the two-year trial then? Or do you wanna have the full board just end it?
I guess personally for me, what I think is giving, given what our financial situation is and we don't know what's going to happen going forward, I personally think that we should look at this on a year-by-year basis. That would give us an opportunity to know how our next levy goes if we go for another levy. So that's just my thoughts on that.
Prior to that, what was the loss of revenue if we buy allowing for free? So obviously you're having kids at events and everything. We had to spend a dollar.
It'd be a little bit tough to go back and do like a historical, simply because if you're looking at like a five-year look back, two of those years are COVID, where we weren't getting anything. On average, roughly, revenue, and this is all activities revenue, so it'd be not only gate but participation. I think sometimes participation fluctuates a little bit on how kids are attending, but we're just under about $180,000 a year in that sort of revenue. We're down about $5,000 and it's hard to say if it's strictly just the revenue from admission. But it's not a huge variance. I do like the idea of taking a look at it on a year-to-year basis rather than just throwing it in as a permanent thing. It just gives you the flexibility to bring it back if need be. As a coach, I do appreciate all the kids coming in.
Yeah, absolutely.
They bring their parents generally, hopefully. But also from the other half, where I get where we gotta make sure, have mindful of the dollar as well. But short answer, this hasn't been a huge significant variance to have the loss of that revenue.
I think as volatile as everything is financially right now, I think that's appropriate to keep it fluid.
And the one thing, I just piggyback on what Josh is saying, like, yeah, maybe it's a $5,000 loss, but we have, or a $5,000 loss of, or $5,000 loss of revenue, what we could possibly have, but we have no data to track. What has our concessions been doing since then?
Yeah, I'm aware of your concession.
And those different kind of items? And what has our attendance been? I don't know if, from a coaches' aspect, can you, since we went this route, can you tell if there's more people possibly in the gym? I mean, obviously that changes with probably how we're doing stuff too.
From my standpoint, we've been more successful the last few years. You tend to have more people show up when things are going well. But you also don't have people show up when you have masks on and you're in COVID, so we, it's hard to go back. I think if you do a year-to-year look back, it makes it a bit easier to go out, to get maybe a five-year historical that's more accurate, to give you an idea of maybe what the cost has been. But I think you're right, my kids can get a 20 bucks either way, whether it goes $55 to admission, 15 to concession, or 20 to concession.
And our clubs do the concessions, so that money's gotta come back to kids anyway, so. And it was in finance, it was important to that group that this went forward, but I do agree that looking at it yearly is, at this point is.
I think it's beneficial for families to be able to go and have their costs reduced to be able to go to family outing.
I agree.
Well, you might have a kid that wouldn't have never came along with not bringing their parents, but if you have a kid that's able to get in free now, the parents might feel, well.
I agree. Yeah, I think parents are attending probably, you know, attending with those kids because the kid is free, so it's cheaper for the parents to just try to get the parent pass or, you know, pay for themselves to get in.
Yeah, and in the spirit of doing this, it was all about trying to build community. Also, you know, there might be a kid that would never go to a basketball game or a wrestling event and maybe he'll join wrestling and then there's a group there.
It is one less barrier for a kid who wrestles and hang out with his friends. So if we're gonna make a basketball game tonight, you know, there's not the adoption of, like, a reward to find $5 to get there.
A safe place for kids to be is.
Do you know if we've had any increased behavioral issues since we started doing this at all?
I would say.
If anything's been different?
No, that hasn't really changed.
Sure.
Great opportunity for kids to hang out.
Yes.
And I think this is, I don't know how many other schools do this and I think that's just, this is something that's really great that we can offer.
I agree.
And set us apart. And we still do, the visiting kids still get charged.
Correct, yeah. It's only on students.
Double.
Well, I made the motion to continue on with the free admission, but revisit yearly.
I'll second that.
All right, Luke with the motion for, on an annual, approval of an, on an annual basis. Jolynn on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to adjust administrative restructuring to include a reduction of the K through 12 dean of students position.
With the uncertainty of finances at the state and federal level, administratively, we are recommending further restructuring of our administrative structure by reducing the K through 12 dean of students position that we have. And if, you know, obviously if numbers go up, you know, that's a good thing and we can revisit this later. But at this point, with the uncertainty of finances and then even some need, obviously at the elementary level, for consideration, this is, would be a good time to reduce that position as well. So I'm recommending that we reduce that position.
Tim, I'm wondering, you have any thoughts you wanna add on this at all?
I think it's a smart time to do that. It's a, there's not a person involved in the cut right now. And I think we've proven over the course of the spring that we can make it work with just two principals. Yeah, we've done it before and we've had a lot more students here, had only two principals, so it's possible. Just, you know, the, we'll have to reprioritize what we do, but we believe that.
Do we know how Stephen feels?
He feels the same way. Yeah.
Any other questions for Jeff? We're gonna look at eliminating this before it even began.
Do we have any sort of threshold of if we get to a certain number, we gotta, we can't just continue to pull?
It's more of a feel. I would say with that position, I don't think there's a threshold for that.
Depending on how the principals feel like, what their needs are, kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, we'll start noticing it with pride, behavior and attendance, you know, that it's probably the big part of that dean job. And so, but we'll just be open if we need to come back, you know, a year, two or three or whenever it is, it has pered out.
All right, no more questions. I would look for a motion to approve the reduction of the K through 12 dean of students position.
Make a motion.
Rondi on the motion?
I'll second.
Pete on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Motion carries. Looks like we just have a discussion item.
Yes.
Referendum possibilities, timeliness, finance committee meeting, etc.
Due to the timelines of, uh, if the board is gonna consider going out for another, uh, chance at passing the operating levy, we need to start having those discussions right now, because we need to pass resolutions and get, uh, some marketing stuff ready for this fall. Uh, the resolution timelines, I believe, are in August, but because of where the board meeting falls and when the deadlines are, we need to start getting those ready to pass at the latest by the July board meeting. And I'd prefer to probably have that done even before that. So I think the big discussion points are, one, do you wanna go out for another chance at passing an operating levy? Two, uh, what would that amount be, look like for an increase? Last time, we asked for seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase, and we can, we can gather information on what those, um, tax impacts would be for the community like we did last time. The, the last time we passed an operating levy was about twenty years ago. You know, or we've had the same operating levy in effect, I should say, for twenty years at this point. And it doesn't have an inflationary factor. That's another thing to consider as part of our questions about whether you wanna add an inflationary factor into it. What else? I think that's about it for now.
And that seven-fifty was based on a three-hundred-thousand tax assessed value, correct?
Yeah, at the time. I have to go back in another literature, but I think it was three-hundred-thousand-dollar average house, quote-unquote, in the community.
Yeah, uh, well, the soonest we can go out is November.
Yeah, that's the only time, because you can only do it once a year.
Right, and I'm assuming we, you definitely don't wanna do it in December. That's a bad time. So we're gonna wanna look at hitting this right in November, right?
Yep, we'll do it on a general election, and, and will actually be the off-cycle of the general election. And so we would have to more than likely run it, because I don't think there's gonna be a special election held at any of the county seats that I am aware of yet. And so we would have to run this election.
Run this, price-wise?
And it'll still be about ten to fifteen thousand dollars, roughly. By the time you pay election judges and rent machines and do marketing materials and stuff like that, that's what reelection costs us, roughly. Uh, we do have good partners, you know, with the city in running those elections, so Lori, uh, does a good job with setting all that up.
I know, I know the last time that we went out for one, I mean, we basically set that seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar mark, because that is kind of what we needed in a way to basically represent what the current five-hundred was twenty-some years ago, correct? And we're just trying to balance that out. So now, I don't know, without, without, with that not passing, now, does that number go up a touch, which I hate to even say that? Or, uh, I guess I'd like to see some numbers of the seven-fifty mark as something that, uh, works for us, or not, or.
Yeah, I think we already went out for that. And it's the history of the district, uh, to not be excessive. It would be something that was gonna be, uh, pretty modest to get us through.
Except for the middle one, right?
Oh, yeah, because it was seven-fifty, one thousand and twelve fifty, so we set the survey out.
If you look at, you know, what, roughly, use thousand kids as your, your number, um, a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase would be a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase of district in revenue. Um, we just reduced five-hundred-and-eighty, and then also reduce the bus off of that, so you're kind of that ballpark.
And so we're looking at about nine-hundred-thousand now.
So to your point, you know, it could be a little bit.
Maybe a thousand, and pick it, pick it.
Does it have to be on the ballot? Does it have to be a yes or no vote, or can you give those tiers on the ballot?
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yeah, so we have to pick a number.
Do we know how many districts out there do, um, the increases of inflation?
That utilized.
That, that should become, since the legislature is a well that, that has been the route that school districts have chosen to go, just because that helps take out inflation in general. So the five-hundred dollars that we currently have on the books, that's been eaten up over the past twenty years with inflation. And so, um, depends on how you wanna look at it. I mean, obviously, if you go out for more, you know, there's, there's risk to that, but if you don't ask for enough, you don't wanna go out twice. And so you gotta find out where that sweet spot is, and, and do a little bit of research on it, but you also have to be able to justify why we need it. And I think historically, when you look at, shoot, even just the past three years, how much money we can cut. And this year, initially, we cut five-sixty, we cut a bus for one-forty, so that's seven-hundred thousand. We just cut roughly a hundred-thousand-dollar dean position, so that's eight-hundred thousand dollars, just this year.
And we're at thirty kids in the class.
Well, right, and so that's, that's part of the narrative also. So what do you want, what do you want your school to look like?
And I think the question is too, is what do we do different this time, you know, that will make this successful, that we didn't already do last time?
I agree.
You know, how, how do we approach this differently to make this more successful?
Wanna do this, if we do something different, I challenge this group to figure out what that is. I don't have an answer yet, because.
Well, personally, I think I'd like to approve all the cuts that will be made if the levy doesn't pass ahead of time.
I'd agree with that.
So we can market, but not, market is not probably the right word, but we can show that, hey, if this doesn't pass, these are the hard-line cuts.
I think if you have your cuts ready to go in September, you pass them in September, and say, we're not gonna go back and revisit this. It's up to the community to figure out what they want their school to look like. It's not a threat, but this is a reality. These are the cuts that we need to make, and here's where we go.
We touched on it on the material last time. We touched on, this is what could potentially happen if this doesn't pass. But I think maybe this time it just needs to be more very, very black and white, like, this is the outcome. This is, this is it, because we, we don't have another option financially.
I mean, we're, we're being responsible with the num, whatever number we decide to go out with this time, uh, it's not a want. This is a need, and, uh, everyone needs to understand that, and that's how that message needs to be put out there, so.
And the board, I think, intentionally wasn't threatening during the last one. One, with survey data to back up what our decision was. And two, it means it's just not the way to go about.
Then also, the taxpayers are gonna be more informed, right, you know, these are the consequences in general. They might wanna see, maybe they wanna see that.
Well, that's where, I mean, on the literature and even the presentations that we gave, I mean, it was stated what was going to be, what was possibly going to be cut, but it wasn't a sure thing. And so that's why there is, there is some people in the community that were, I don't know if they just didn't pay attention at all, that they're surprised when we have made certain cuts. Well, we didn't know that that was gonna happen, and it's like, oh, kinda put that out there. Uh, but that's where I think this, this time, I mean, we just have to have that stuff approved right away.
It needs to be very black and white and clear to the community. Well, we definitely have a large amount in the community too that just still seem to state, this doesn't affect me. I don't have kids in the school.
And that's part of the narrative also, that the school district is a part of the community, and if the school district starts to fail, and the community starts to.
And maybe we do better in, in that department, maybe, I, you know, to try to bring those votes in.
Are we able to separate and have two questions on the ballot? So one for inflationary factor and one for the dollar and all?
We could ask that question, because you could ask a simple increase of, I don't know, pick a number, thousand. And then, would you be willing to add inflationary factor onto that? I'm thinking that's probably doable. We can ask Jeff at Ellers.
I think they would invite you to just have one question.
Then the whole thing fails, right? Cause I mean, the, the two, because of what, the inflationary factor is based on CPI, right, so you get two or three.
Yeah.
Okay, last year was, wow, but. But they averaged two to three percent.
There was feedback that people were, would laugh at us asking for inflation factor, because inflation was going crazy. So they didn't, they're voting on something, but they don't know what they're gonna be paying for, it could keep going crazy, and so I did have some feedback that was, that didn't appreciate that.
But we're capped there so much.
Everyone's gotta realize if their expenses are going up, we're no different than this school.
But it's their load and their wallet that, you know, that, so.
But the, the cap, there's a cap on what we can get for inflation.
There is, um, what the state gives in that revenue.
State aid, there is.
State aid, okay.
Yeah, but not for an operating.
But we want to adjust at seven percent or eight percent, we would go.
If it was on the operating levy, yeah, it would, it would follow that.
Follow the CPI, so.
The state only gives, what, three percent?
CPI or, uh, correct me wrong, ninety percent.
The floor is two percent, and the ceiling is three percent for the state aid of the inflationary place. But on an operating levy, it just follows whatever the number is, whether it's higher or lower.
And is that, or just is that something we, or we would approve to say if CPI was seven percent, and we say, hey, we only need five?
You can under levy, I suppose, you know, for that year.
Every time when you guys, so in September, we would bring the initial levy information. As a process, so you get to December where you finally finalize the levy, uh, you can always under levy, uh, if you, the district chooses to do so.
Right, so we don't, yeah. I think that's something we can inform the community too, and say, we might, you know, why would we not go for it all? But if we just need the CPI, and we only have that five percent, and it's seven, they might see.
Definitely if our, if our finances were in good shape, that would show really good faith to the community by doing something.
I'd be interested to see if we can separate the questions out.
I think, you know, and the other reason I would, that they would probably suggest is the one question is, sometimes when you're given choices, throw that inflationary part out, they're not gonna vote for that, that portion of it. Likewise, if you have A, B, and C, oftentimes, the lesser the option, or instead of just waiting, no, um, on something. Uh, so it just becomes something, when it's on the ballot, a little bit easier for someone to decide. If the board wishes to have the second question on A, I would definitely throw that on and do that for you. But, um, I guess what it may apply is in simpler being open.
There's, there's instances where people may have thinking that they understand the two questions, but they get in, and then all of a sudden, they freeze in the ballot box. And they, you know, they may vote no on both of them, you know, and so.
But if they vote no on one, is a vote for no one, or for both?
And we, we've done some multi options in the past, whether it's a survey or, um.
Oper, or the bond levy.
The bond levy, and it was not well received, and not from what the feedback was to me, is it was, and it was a little more confusing than maybe this, but.
It was confusing, I think people.
There was multiple levels, and one had to pass to keep the next, and that was messy for people.
But in this case, if we, we, do we need both to pass to get one? Or could we, could one fail and we get the other?
You would not get, you can't put the inflationary on the current levy, because that'd be in place. Uh, you'd be revoking the current one and replacing with this one. So you'd either get the new levy or.
And, and that's a good, good point also, because we're gonna have to revoke, and there's gonna be a lot of language in the question anyway, because we have to revoke our current one and replace it. And I don't know what the second question would look like, but I'm guessing it would be another revoke type language, which would get very confusing for people also. I mean, we can talk to Jeff at Ellers about that, to see what that would look like, but they'll probably end up recommending just keeping the one question, like Josh said.
Can you remind me, we already board-approved one re-up on what we're doing, right? So we, we're out of, we can't do that.
We're out of re-ups. To my understanding of how that works, that's what school districts are understanding.
So that it goes back to what the number is we asked for, and how important the increase would be. Could you do it, could you increase it by one dollar and then add inflation, you know, go to the community and ask? You know, cause then it's a different, it's not the same, I mean, I know that city, but.
Well, it's a way of getting out some dollars, right? By a hundred dollars.
You get the inflationary piece on.
I know that doesn't help us in this situation, but.
And you're looking at then, probably fifty thousand dollars if that, if not less.
Yeah, it would depend on the year and what the inflation would be on, on that levy. But you're probably wanting a dollar to the current five-hundred dollars, so it's five oh one plus inflation. Yeah, so, you know, two percent down to five hundred. It's good, what, what happens is, I mean, had it been on the initial levy twenty years ago, it's a much different looking five-hundred dollars for people that would.
Do we wanna look at, are we looking at doing another survey, or we kinda have their information, we kinda have the information from the last one, I don't know what.
And clearly, it didn't benefit us, so.
Well, if you're gonna do a survey, it would have to be done in a short amount of time. And you, you did a survey in March of last year prior to November, and it changed ten percent. You know, from fifty-seven down to forty-seven passing over six months. Now, granted, there is a lot of things going on during that six months. Do you do another survey, and then something else changes between now and the next six months, you know? It's hard to say, it really truly is.
Unless the question was very, unless our questions in our survey were drastically different, that we're asking.
Yeah, I'd rather save the money or use the money in a different way of some sort, that I don't know what it looks like yet, but it seems like that would be better.
Cause I agree, I think those survey results were a little bit misleading, isn't the right word, but maybe it was easier for people, or maybe the people that actually submitted the surveys wasn't a right pool of voters in comparison with our pool of actual voters.
I, I think good sound, you need to ask for what we need. And again, it's not our one. We need to say what we need, and we need to say plainly what we need and why. And, I, I mean, have the lawyers understand that. I mean, if they turn us down, they turn us down, and quite honestly, if they turn us down again, I think we're done.
Is there a better time to do it than a prime election? As far as their past history of it being approved, any levies or bonds?
Um, for levies, uh, levies generally take place on the November date. You, cause if they don't, then the school district has to mail it out?
I think what you're asking is if it was a presidential.
Oh, yeah, um, there's some thoughts to the, that school elections are not as successful on presidential elections, for sure. But if you go off-cycle, sometimes it's better, I don't know why, but.
What, what is our cost difference, like you said, ten to fifteen thousand? Is there a significant cost difference going off-cycle versus?
Not really that I can think of.
You know, having to, because it's just us then hiring voter staff and stuff, correct?
The cost is maybe the workload in our office, and now when absentee somebody will come to our office, and so we're having, and again, Lori will be the more expert on that, she runs elections, and some things have changed on, uh, ballot sites, but, um, when we're running the election, then we'd be responsible for doing some of those things. Uh, the last one we did, um, the absentees, we were doing that pretty constantly throughout, uh, just because it's a lot more popular option, I think, for people to do with absentee. But that's neither here nor there, we gotta run one, we, or the health of the district.
If we didn't do the survey, would, cause they're both the same, right, the survey cost in the, to run an election, wasn't involved?
Survey was, survey is pretty cheap, actually, just the mailing of it.
So when do you think we, when do we have to have an exact number by?
The latest July. And it may be a resolution, there is, I'd have to look at the timelines again, but there were some resolutions that were offset that we have to meet, that we may have to do in June, and then I think the final one has to be June July.
Just remember, everyone, that we're moving into our only one meeting a month cycle, so.
Does the finance committee already have an idea what they'll need to cut for the following year already, or not yet?
No. One of the things, Honor, that we need to talk about is probably setting up the finance committee. We need to start discussing some of these items more in depth, and a route, and get input from the people on the finance committee. And so if that's the route that you guys wanna do, we can certainly set that up, and then what information do we need to bring to the finance committee? I'm sure tax impact would probably be one of them, I'm guessing, and then some high-level budgetary numbers, which we can just look back at our past cuts, you know, as far as where this is headed at. You know, as far as where this is headed at.
Is there a percentage of voters that we need, obviously majority, but with it not being a prime election, presidential election, or is there a certain minimum number we need to show up? I'm just thinking if people just, well, the school's out going again for another election, and they don't wanna come to the ballots, we're only gonna get a hundred respondents.
Now, you're seeing majority at hundred, but I said no.
So there's no government, okay.
Yeah, there's no.
Stipulation of what you need.
Base number of votes that need to happen.
I know, when we, when we tried to do some of our, like, outreach stuff, like when we opened up a school here to have, like, here's a meeting, if you have questions, come in, here's a presentation, and they, they weren't terribly well attended, obviously, right, last time? But I wonder if we rephrase that or reword that in some type of inviting manner, let's have a community conversation, like, conversation as we had, guys need to be educated, this, like, this, I, I don't, I don't know how that could be looked at differently or phrased differently, or to entice more people to come in, to have that type of conversation, especially to people who were voting no for previously.
Yeah, I know there's outreach, I wasn't obviously involved, but I saw and listened to what you guys had to say in outreach groups. But if we can get these numbers in sooner, right, that may give us more talking points and having information to speak to. Whether we go and have a booth at a, a summer camp, just for parents to come and ask us questions, and it's, it's demanding for us, but we go and volunteer an hour of time during a camp for parents to come in, and I can see that being potentially more beneficial. We stop by and ask one or two questions versus having like another dedicated trip to come in there.
Yeah, I like that idea, it's just that most of those are voting yes, or, I mean, we need to reach this population that is, has got.
And that's what I'm bringing, I have to go out and say.
I love the idea, yeah.
Please help us. I mean, it's not just us, we need the community, obviously, to help. I think it is one we need to ask for. That was where I was, I was surprised, right, to see how much work you guys put into it. But I didn't hear it from anyone else in the community, like, hey, where are you voting? Are you, are you informed enough to know?
Well, it's, some things are just coming through my head now, as a, I mean, we could look at doing something during the fair, like down the parade. Are you doing something like that?
If you guys have made a decision to go out, because then you'd have to have information ready to vote for that.
I mean, we'll only do it if you write on the float, though.
Me or him? If an Uncle Sam had on.
Will I be in the dump tank down at the fair?
Oh, there you go. I'll have a portable one on the wagon, a dump tank, because I know I can get one.
Sassy as a thing is.
The score will go a little bit.
No, I, I think we're going to have to reach out a lot more than last time, so we'll have to go find these people for presentations or.
Like the Thursday Fun Fest comes to brain or something, you know, a couple of us sit there and just.
Or similar sports camps this summer that go on, right, what's South Princeville, or the Northside, or the Bay Area?
And I think the other thing, like, Luke said though, like, quite often, these people that go to these things, these are the people that vote yes. That's the problem, is it's trying to find, it's, it's trying to get to these other groups that voted no, and how, and what, what do we go to to find them?
You can see that data online, the voter demographic, where the votes were no and yes.
By township.
By township, yeah.
By township, but I mean, some of them were heavy-handed, right, I can see the way I'm at, some of them were heavy-handed, yes, and next one over is no, right, so it's, I mean, that's where we put on, our time to.
Yeah, there's only one township that passed there, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, so that's where the door knocking can start. And I don't, I don't think it just needs to fall to us, we're sixteen individuals. We gotta employ the community to volunteer, right, just as we do with all of our sports.
Well, and I think, I think the educating that will do on, use of things that are.
I think we gotta be a little careful on crossing that line of voting yes versus telling the message.
Correct, informing versus.
Informing, right, I think it's more informing.
First way, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So we gotta be a little careful with that.
Educating.
Yes, informing. I think the biggest one is explaining what the dollar, I think you can have the numbers. But also, there is some questions we fielded on the CPI, right, the inflationary, right, is, they thought a lot of it was, is it gonna be that volatile, right? Or is it gonna be on a month-to-month, quarter-to-quarter basis? General questions, I were well-informed of, but as a community, they, they might not have any idea, or they're just subjected to it.
Facility committee? Get that fired up.
You mean finance?
Finance, yeah.
Just don't talk about facilities with financing.
Nope, finance, finance committee will get a, a date set up with the, the members of that here next couple of weeks or so, and then, um.
I'd say definitely go on in here, and so hopefully there's something to bring back to the next meeting.
Or at least some information of where we're at, and then if we need to have another finance committee meeting, we can certainly do that, maybe finalize in June. Um, or at least have some conversation again in Maine as a, as a board here.
Do we have some schools in the area that went out last fall that passed? That are like in our area, like in our.
There's one in Western Angeles, I know it's a different state, but some, in Western Angeles, Wisconsin.
I mean, far-fetched, but maybe, maybe chatting with those guys, like, hey, what worked for you guys? What do you feel like was well-received, or what do you think people were like, this was really good, this, you know, what did you hear people in your community say that this helped me with my vote?
Uh, just off the top of my head, I think it was Lewiston passed a bond and they're operating, but they had failed it like two or three times before. But I gotta double-check that with Gwen. No, there's a lot of schools, especially in outstate, that fail.
I, I know, I know.
Especially they're operating.
So if there's anything that did pass.
And there's, there's other schools in the area that are going out, uh, Goodie was talking about it, that they're going out for an operating first time. And so it's, we're not the only one that's gonna fail.
For sure. I'm just wondering if there's anything different that we haven't done yet, or how we haven't phrased something differently in similar schools, like, this was really successful for us? You know, any, any, some, any new idea?
Was the, was in city taxes just raised as well? Did I read something? Are we gonna be, I'm not, I don't see it, so I don't think there was something in town where taxes were, I don't know.
I mean, I live in town, my taxes have historically gone up regularly, but I think it's, I guess I can't speak to if it's property values or.
Well, utilities went up, maybe, or April first.
That was, that was a significant jump.
That was a pretty, that was part of that whole class action suit that we're in right now.
So, I think there's more, we can be informed on these types of ones.
Alright, we'll go to finance committee being scheduled and bring some information to that.
Alright, we'll move on to informational items. Uh, you see on there what we have coming up at future meetings. If any of you ever has anything that you would like added to the next meeting, contact Jeff or Lori, and we will get it on there. So, else, uh, yeah, don't have anything else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
What make motion?
Tell Lynn on the motion, in a second. Luke on the second, any other discussion? We survived the first round of the storm.